All right, well, welcome, everybody. Calling to order at six oh two, this meeting of the Equity Policy Committee. Of the Harwood Union Unified School Boards, uh, School Board. So why don't we start with looking at the minutes from our last meeting, which was way back in June? Any, anybody want to make a motion on that one?
I move to approve the minutes.
Back in.
Great. Uh, any discussion? All right, any objections? To, uh, moving forward with approving that? Fantastic. So approved. Thank you, Mike, for, for the good note taking. Appreciate your efforts.
Pulling up the document now.
A quick roll call on Life Legaros. I'm, uh, representing Duxbury and chairing this committee.
Elizabeth Brown, representing Waterbury.
Bria Terravella, representing Waterbury.
Ashley Woods, representing Warren, and I'm the current board chair.
And I'm Mike Looklater, I'm the superintendent of schools, and I live in Duxbury.
Awesome. Well, thanks, everybody, for, for showing up. Very quickly, uh, I'm just, I, I don't see anything, but this would be the time for public comment. Am I right that if somebody was, was here, we would, we would all see them? It's not a panel situation, right?
Correct, yes. I, I set it up as just a meeting, so everyone would be in the room, so there's no one here.
Okay, so no, no public, uh, here, live and in person to comment, so we'll move on with the next part of the agenda. Um, which is basically the main part of the agenda tonight, which is, uh, reviewing the equity policy and, um, reviewing public feedback. We're gonna start with the public feedback, so although we don't have anybody here in person, um, we do have the results of our survey. Uh, and so hopefully, everybody has access to that. And I think there's a couple of ways we can proceed, like if everybody feels like they've gotten to spend some time with it, do some analysis. Um, we could kind of go one by one and just say a little bit about what we're seeing. Um, or we could take a little bit of time right now, a little work time to, to do some review. Um, I'm open to either one. I've taken a pretty good look at it. Um, and so I would suggest when we get to that point that we each kind of share what we're seeing. And then we create essentially a punch list of things that we would like to, um, either address or integrate into the draft. And then figure out a way forward. Um, so, uh, how, how are you feeling other, other committee members, Elizabeth and Tori? Um, would you appreciate a little time right now, or are we ready to, to start talking about the, the results?
Uh, I think it's fine to start talking about results and perspectives of those.
Okay, how about you, Tori?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Great. Um, so, uh, either one of you can, if, if you, if you're open to starting, um, just can share some, some stuff, some, some observations of what you're seeing in the data.
It doesn't seem like everybody's thrilled how we're doing this.
It does not seem that way, is that what you said?
Yeah, it doesn't. There's, I mean, there's, there's some positive ones. There's some really helpful things in here. I noticed somebody in here said that they didn't see a definition of equity, which I thought we put in there. Yeah, and there are people that are happy to see it, but yeah, it's, it's an interesting mixed bag.
Yeah, I don't think I was too surprised by, you know, the broad spectrum of, of responses, although we didn't receive many. Um, two of the responses were actually from neighbors, one of whom is actually a teacher as well, so I reached out to them to just get some clarification. You know, my concern kind of going out with the survey is, is that we were gonna get exactly what we got, which I felt like was the full spectrum. So it's like, how do you sort of take that full spectrum and then incorporate that into the policy? In a way that people are feeling heard. So, I mean, that was, you know, one of the concerns I have. Having said that, you know, having a couple of months now to reflect on the work that we did in June. You know, my perspective is I, I feel like it's a pretty solid start. I think it's a good policy. Um, and I know we're talking about the survey, but Life, I, I still have not seen and would like an update of the work that was done over the summer as well, uh, you know, getting the perspective of our staff and whether or not they had any substantial changes as well.
Sounds good. Mike, do you want to share some thoughts, and maybe you can, um, respond to that last piece as well?
Sure, we ha- I ask, uh, our members of our TFR committee, we had two people who participated, who kind of set up the process. Uh, I also met with Andrea, uh, who was not able to meet over the summer, but, uh, is a teacher at Harwood Middle School. Uh, we had tried to set up a student, uh, group. Uh, we met with some students. I met, also met in addition to Andrea with, um, Rachel Potts, who's another teacher, and the, the time we set up for students to meet did not work. We did, we had, didn't have more than the original two that had initially expressed interest, so, uh, we didn't have any real focus groups, which is why when Life and I talked, we added the questions about would you be interested in follow-up discussion, thinking that that may be a good way to, uh, get additional feedback. We, we really want more of the full, uh, survey route because we did not get much of a response on the initial summertime offer for, um, groups, focus groups.
Thank you. Uh, do you want to say anything, Mike, about what you're seeing in the, the survey results?
Uh, I, I've, I, I've worked before in my previous, uh, superintendency with, uh, with equity, and, and I think I would agree with Elizabeth. Whether you put it out to a large group, or whether you put it out to focus groups, uh, particularly in the last four years, there's different feelings to the word equity and what that means, uh, in the current contexts. So I'm not at all surprised with the results we've received. Uh, I do think the, kind of the missing piece is the, uh, the work that has come out of Vermont's Act One. Uh, educational quality standards, uh, and, and the mandate from the legislature to incorporate equity into the standards, and then uh, Ashley talked a little bit about the, the board meeting, I think in September, Ashley, about the IRIS framework uh, that was also put out. Uh, so we are gonna see more work in the next couple of years, uh, as a result. I think sometimes that's the piece that's missing when, when you're not kind of in the, at the ground level doing the work, so um, like I said, it doesn't surprise me from the higher level, but I do think, I think many things, we want to get as much input, and we have, want to have a good framework for our staff, so I think uh, I think we're still on the right track.
So Mike, given that, and given the fact that we know that there might be more coming from a legislative sort of perspective, do you feel like we're in a good starting point for where we are now, as we continue to receive further direction in the future?
I, I do. I think for, you know, kind of the, the legislative piece is done. Uh, that, that work was passed up to, uh, to a committee uh, that it met for, and, uh, before I was in Vermont, Life would probably have a better, uh, understanding of the whole process. Uh, but that, that has been adopted by the State Board of Education, goes into effect July one, so what we'll see, and, and from what we've heard from, uh, state levels, what we'll see is, is more uh, framework. How does this translate to work in the classroom? How does this translate to integration into other subjects? So I think we'll have, I think it's, we, we have that outside structure, and while there may be other things coming, it's just important for us to have a framework of what, kind of the board's parameters are for that work, which is what I see the policy and the purpose of the policy for the, for the board to say, yes, we've looked at those big pictures, and now thi- this is the definitions that we think are congruent with that guidance, and this is the, the direction and the, kind of the way that we'd like to see our staff implementing, uh, this work.
Is there any reason why we would pause adopting this policy right now, waiting for further clarifications on those standards leading up to July first? Would be one thought. Or two, should we continue down the road we're going right now, which is moving to try to adopt this before year end, knowing that we can always amend it as those standards evolve into next year?
Is that for me or for the committee?
For everybody.
Well, um, I have thoughts on that. Um, if you don't mind, I just want to share a little bit about what I saw in the data. I essentially went through line by line and, um, read everybody's comments, um, and just to give you an idea of process, I kind of grouped each comment, um, put it in a bucket of either being, you know, sort of, um, overwhelmingly positive, overwhelmingly negative, or, uh, more mixed, or meh. In my little, little coding, it was, it was an M, which I think could stand for mixed or meh. Um, and then I also just grabbed out themes, um, or particularly like detailed comments, and sort of did some, you know, kind of qualitative research-y type approach to group those into, to try to, uh, see what sort of guidance there was there. Um, you know, at the end of, you know, through my scheme, uh, I ended up coming up with about thirty-five-ish comments being positive, like very positive. Um, twenty or so that were very negative, and I think a lot of those folks, you know, to the extent that unclear how much they even read the policy, they were more like talking about just equity in general and/or interpretations that weren't necessarily even part of the policy, um, so reading into it like, um, you know, part of the political environment. And then there were probably ten or so that were more mixed, you know, some of those were people who said like, I really like the idea about it, but I don't have a lot of hope that it's gonna make a difference. Or, um, you know, nice direction, but need lots more detail kind of stuff. Um, so, I mean, kind of big picture for me, you know, having, um, seen a number of different issues play out in our community and getting responses. Wasn't hugely surprised. I think it just kind of reiterated some of the other data that we've seen. If you think about, you know, the percentage of students at Harwood who, you know, voted for and against flying the pride flag, for example, right? There's, you know, there's, this is contentious stuff. And, um, I think that the good, the good thing is that there was a lot of really, really strong engagement and thoughtful commentary. Um, including from people who are overwhelmingly positive, giving, you know, sort of some, um, constructive feedback, and people who are more in that mat or mixed group. Um, also just providing some really good ideas, um, and, you know, that deserve incorporation or response in some sense. Um, so I think it's, it's, I think it's overall been a pretty positive process as far as that goes. Um, I could talk a little bit about content in a moment, but, you know, perhaps the strongest theme that I saw throughout, um, particularly from the positive and, and, and mixed, um, was things about wanting more detail. Um, and, uh, you know, a lot of conversation about like, what, what are the metrics really gonna look like for this? Um, you know, let's, let's get concrete about it. And, you know, in my mind, that's, that's the next step, right? So, um, the policy has a framework, it has the, it's, it's the motivating impetus, and part of what we, we included in there, of course, is that there's an equity advisory team. And that group, you know, sort of takes up the mantle and moves it forward, and that's where the detail comes in. And so I think some, some people were asking for very specific details, and we could possibly kind of go through that punch list a little bit and think like, should we mention that in the policy? Um, because that will then, you know, prioritize those things as procedures. For that, for that next step, but I guess, um, I lean towards, um, trying to move it along so that that team can be put together and get stuff moving. Because I think, uh, you know, as we said, the broader policy context, the statewide, you know, legislative regulatory context around equity is this is certainly a direction. Things are moving, and so we're kind of just like giving our folks a jumpstart and saying, let's hit it. And, you know, providing some parameters where it's appropriate, but some of the stuff will come out in the process.
So a couple of thoughts here, and with like Tori's perspective, given the fact that she's been in policy world for us for so long, and I think you kind of nailed it, Life, which is, you know, I want to make sure that the level of detail that is being asked of us that we're clear as to what is appropriate at the policy level versus the procedure level. Reflecting back on the work we did in June, I think we were trying to be careful around that. So as you have done your analysis, I'd like to better understand what feedback you think has importance as it relates to policy versus what level of detail again is more applicable to, um, procedures. Um, secondly, I think what I picked up in your comment was more specificity around metrics and accountability. You guys all know that's the thing that I'm quite passionate about it as well. I'd have to go back and look at the policy we created. I think we made sure to indicate how we would measure. But I think again, that may become more procedural, perhaps, as we get more levels of detail into that. And thirdly, this is just more a question to this group, you know, I think that we're being asked to represent our constituents, right? In this case, we've got, um, and thank you, Life, for categorizing about thirty-five on the positive side, about twenty on the negative. I want to make sure as we're looking at this that we are equally weighing that kind of feedback, that we're not negating and saying, well, twenty people had sort of negative feedback. We're just gonna ignore that, and we're only gonna incorporate any sort of positive. Um, I want to make sure that we're looking at this from a place of neutrality, repor- representing our constituents, to make sure that even if it is on the more negative side, is there any feedback here that we should be considering as it relates to the policy?
I have thoughts on that, but, um, Tori, do you, uh, anything you want to add at the moment?
Um. It i- it is like a weird balancing act of like policy versus procedure, and I fully acknowledge that, and I feel like that's like a thing that you know, we all struggle with, and, you know. Mo- members of the public that are not staring at this multiple times, um, definitely are not maybe gonna understand it without watching all of our meetings, um, which is a big ask, you know? Um. I mean, we do put in there, you know, as far as like metrics or whatever, it's in there that the superintendent or designee shall develop procedures that include identification of outcome indicators as necessary to monitor the policy and provide quarterly status reports, so I feel like that's like as close to detail as we can get without going into procedure. Um, happy to hear pushback, but, um, you know, and I, I do feel like some of these, some of these, you know, comments for wanting more stuff. I mean, I do think we should look at some of these comments, like, you know, there's like, there's some stuff, you know, like maybe we need to make it more clear for like certain definitions. Um, you know, a lot of people said that it was super wordy. They don't know how we fix that necessarily. This is, I, I've long past accepted this is just gonna be a wordy document, as long as we don't get to that one that was like eight pages long. That one was scary looking. Um. You know, but there's, there's stuff that we can do, but I do think sometimes some of the things they're asking for are gonna be more procedure side.
Yeah. Um. I agree, and I think that you're, you know, to start with your last question there, Elizabeth, I think that it's, it's a really good one. Um, thinking about how, how do we respond to the voices in our community, right? So, um, you know, among people who rated, who were, you know, on the negative side, um, say people who rated, you know, both ones or one and two kind of thing, right? I think you're totally right, like, it does not you know, do well for us as, as representatives, nor, I don't, I think is a process of equity that's about, um, inclusion to just like discount those completely. Um, and so I think looking at what the substantive feedback was and trying to understand how we can address um, parts of that, I think are, is, is important. And I, you know, I can look through it. There's certainly people there who's, who said it's, you know, um, you know, where's the meat here? Um, which is, you know, we saw again from people who maybe rated it higher. Um, and so I think, you know, being able to like describe how, you know, that, part of that's gonna be proof is in the pudding with the next steps and that, um, equity team. Um, and actually making stuff move. Um, you know, there's, I'm looking at a comment that was, you know, two ones, but they're asking about, you know, what, what exactly is equity? Like, I think you mean a quality of outcomes, but that seems totally unrealistic. Can you name even one real, real-world scenario where a focus on equal outcomes has a positive and lasting effect? So that kind of thing, even though some of their other comments said I would toss this document out and dissolve your committee, I think that that's giving us insight there, right? If somebody's like still looking at this and wondering like, wait, what are you talking about? Then we should look at that wording. And if they were saying, oh, I think you're saying equality of outcomes, then we should make sure that we've clarified that. Right? So there's definitely things to take on here, and it might not, you know, be the thing that convinces that person, like, this is the greatest idea ever. I'm in love with this document, but it's gonna make the document better. Um, having said that, there's definitely some comments in here that I don't feel bad about, um, essentially ignoring, right? So there's comments in here about, um, you know, identity, about trans identity, gender identity, that are, you know, offensive. I mean, they're not, they're not, they're not helpful in a, in a constructive way. And so I think the way I look at that, you know, you, one, one way phrasing you used, Elizabeth, is how do we kind of stay neutral? And I guess for me, we have to like recognize that we're not neutral, right? Generally with the board, we, we represent our constituents, but we also bring our own, um, ideas, priorities, and values. And in this case, we're trying to work on what are the shared values of our community, of our education community. Um, what is the vision that we're leading with as a board, right? And so, you know, in a very simple frank terms, right? One of the things that we're leading with is that, um, you know, we believe that all identities should be affirmed, right? And we say that upfront. Every single identity, every single person, regardless of identity or background, needs to be affirmed in our district unless it's, you know, something that's actually harmful to other identities, right? So that's a value that we're bringing, we're putting on the table, and we say as a group, but we're gonna bring to the board and say, can we all get behind this? And so even within this broader policy context in Vermont, regulatory context of things moving towards equity, right? There's different ways to go about that. I will move through it kicking and screaming and do what I have to do. Or as a board, us saying, no, actually, we're all about it. Let's go. And so, you know, it, it is a value statement in that sense. And so it's not to say that those people are, you know, less worthwhile or that we don't want to engage in dialogue, or we wouldn't try to educate and, um, you know, help them under, try to understand what these values are, um, understand how they might re- um, relate to some of their other priorities. But, you know, we don't, I don't feel compelled to try to incorporate that specific viewpoint um, that, that is, in essence clashes with the, the central premise of the whole thing.
I certainly wasn't implying that we would take anything if there were like racist comments, or you know, anything like that. It was, it was more about
Yeah, no.
I mean, because there's always, I think, golden nuggets in the negative as well, and so I just make sure that instead of just tossing out twenty responses, that we were truly trying to ourselves, look at it, putting our own biases aside and say, is there anything in here in terms of how we should modify, you know, the language or the content accordingly? That was my only app.
Absolutely, and I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't mean to cr- critique you at all, Elizabeth. I totally think that that idea of like, how are we incorporating these voices? Are we supposed to be sort of neutral arbiters? I think that's like a super important question, so I just, I wanted to lay out the way I'm thinking about it in terms of value, so it's still like up for discussion, um, but I certainly wasn't, you know, I
Well, I'll give you just one example, right, is, you know, so, so Juan is, you know, the district has gone off the hinges at twenty-three K per people, the district has fallen apart since unifying. So, you know, the point there and, and some of the other comments in here is like, how are you gonna do this when we're already struggling on the financial front? Like, how are you gonna create this balance? Coming into budget season, that's something we're gonna have to talk about. We're gonna have to say there is a way to be culturally responsive in the classroom and consider, you know, the different identities and, and, you know, diversification, everything. Um, learning disabilities, poverty, there's a way to do this in a way that is also cost-effective, that is not going to be in addition to. Um, and we're, we're looking at it through that lens, because I think that people in our community who are scared about the financial aspects of what's are going on, are going, are going to be concerned about that, you know? Are you then going to drive down the quality of education? And so it's just like how to tell that's, that storytelling that needs to go around this as well. Um, that we can look at our curriculum, we can build this in, it doesn't necessarily mean additional costs. It doesn't mean, it, it should enhance the curriculum, it shouldn't negate the curriculum. I think those are things that we just need to keep in mind.
Totally agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, good points.
So I, I think if, if others are, um, open to it, you know, kind of like trying to pull out a couple of the themes, I think Elizabeth just named an important one. And think about how we might incorporate it into the draft and/or respond. I think would be something we want to move towards, but does anybody else want to, um, offer anything, any, any thoughts on just how we incorporate this range of voices?
I think we just have to be clear in terms of where we have to, or where we might make adjustments to the actual policy itself, what would be more procedural, and then what would be more, um, again, storytelling commentary around this. I think that from my perspective, it's kind of those three buckets.
I was gonna make similar comment with, with what's, what, what should be incorporated here, which should we put in procedure, and what should we just talk about as general cultural mission type of statements? Which goes along with your storytelling.
And, um, okay, we can talk a little bit about pro- process later, but just so I'm understanding, when we say kind of general culture, mission-type statements or storytelling, are we thinking that, um, when we bring the pol- the, our next, our draft to the board, that there would be like, whatever, a memo or, or something behind it that kind of describes a little bit about the process, and maybe hits a couple of issues, even if the language isn't in the, the draft policy? Is that what people are picturing?
I mean, I think that's a good question, right? Are we, I, I think that's important when we bring it obviously to our board, that we bring, you know, sort of the background. We can bring some of these perspectives from the survey. But then the question is, you know, we now have gone out to the community, our school community, as well as the broader community, saying we're working on this. So what does that look like? And I think that's for this team to decide, you know, do we want this to be a broad rollout? Do we want it to be more quiet, and we're just sort of implementing the policy and, and it is what it is? I think we should probably determine what that communication strategy looks like.
And I think so, another piece to, when I say mission as well, part of it is, and we, and we can have, I'll ask Shannon Leslie to be at that meeting, but we can also talk a little bit about the integration into curriculum, which is a piece that goes along with educational quality standards, so that's another application, uh, that will be something in the future. And that's, uh, kind of going back to the concerns too with, with costs and everything else. Uh, that's a regular part of what we do. Uh, so that is a regular integration into a cycle of reviewing and updating curriculum.
Equity is also in our general mission statement, right? So you've got equity, efficiency. Which one am I missing? There's three Es.
Ex- excellence?
Excellence, right? So, you know, I, I think it's an important part of the mission statement of our district.
Totally. Yes. Um, great, well, if, if we can move into like themes a little bit, um, I feel like that, um, that exact interplay, um, between excellence and equity is one of the themes I heard come out a little bit, is people talking about like, you know, a pattern in the past of, of dumbing stuff down that they had perceived. Or just kind of a worry that this isn't central to our mission, because we should really be Or just kind of a worry that this isn't central to our mission because we should really be about, you know, academics. And things like that, which I think is a. Fairly co- uh, 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 framing that I've seen. Come up in other places where people kind of pit equity equity and excellence against each other. Um, and I guess as as I've like looked at my various themes, they ended up in a two buckets. One was kind of, I I would say a little bit around a defining the problem. Type bucket. And I'd put this in there, right? That like just recognizing that. There are certainly problems that are happening right now with with harm and different things that are happening to. Some vulnerable folks in our district. Um. But I would also say that this fits there that, um. You know, just generally, our district could. As always, we're striving to be more excellent. And trying to just like spell out a little bit, you know, how this is not. A back off from that. That in fact, asking students to be, you know. Civically engaged, to understand society, to like be able to like work across difference, to be able to lean into their own identity. Like, all these things are like actually. Incredibly rigorous pursuits, you know? Um, so without like. You know, saying too much about it, I think we could set up with a couple of sentences a little bit more. About. That rationale.
Do you have some specifics?
I don't. What I was kind of thinking is that if we identified some places where we think we might want to have something incorporated. Um, one or more of us could take a shot at it. Um, you know, I'd be happy to work on it. Um, before the next time we get together. So that that was kind of my thoughts is, I don't have language right now. Go ahead, correct.
So one thing I noticed, well, one, I don't know who did this, but. Someone in there that pointed out inconsistent use of Oxford commas, so shout out to that commentator, um, so. That's mostly fixed. I welcome. Double checking. Uh, a lot of people. Address that they don't see gender mentioned. Um. I feel like that's covered by identity. But I want to know if you guys think that we should include gender.
I agree that I think we tried to broaden some of those terms, you know, very specifically. I remember we kind of had like two lines worth of different groups. And I think we very specifically back in June tried to consolidate and broaden some of those, including, I think, putting gender under identity at that time.
Yeah, I I agree that we made a conscious decision around that. Um, and I, uh, another theme that I saw come out was a, a. Couple people at least. Name specific. Several people name specific uh categories. And then there were also a couple of people that just talked about like you never said like specifically any terminology along the lines of. You know, traditionally marginalized. Um. Historically disadvantaged, you know, anything like that. Um, and so that's. You know, that's a conversation we had leading up to this and yeah, we should think about how we want to handle that.
I'm, 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 I'll come back, let me do a little search here and I may come back with a thought in a minute on that one.
Okay.
Life are there, you know, and I'm just going through, I I like, it sounds like you you did a really nice job, I think, doing some analysis in terms of buckets, you know? What specifically, again, if we're focused on the policy here is I'm just sort of re-scanning. I had looked at these about two weeks ago. Rescanning some of the comments, you know, what is popping that you would alter specifically in the policy itself?
I mean. I I do think we could say something as I had mentioned about, um. Sort of equity. And the, you know, the the alignment of equity and excellence.
Okay.
Um, or something like that. Uh, I think that could potentially speak to, you know, defining the the quote unquote problem a little bit. Um. I think that, you know, I personally do lean towards. Using like at some point kind of saying something about, you know, vulnerable populations, disadvantaged groups or or some kind of language like that just to. Um. Without necessarily listing. An enormous list.
Um, so I found, if if you don't want me jumping in on that thought.
Yeah.
Um, when Life and I were doing the agenda prep for this, he had asked me about. And basically policy and some of the lessons learned for the last year. And one of the pieces I mentioned is that uh Tori and Danielle do a really good job of referencing other policies. So we may, um, and and I'll look to Tori to think about this. But the board has a policy on non discrimination that lists all those groups. So it may be worth. A footnote referencing uh that document so that we're not adding. Great length to this and that that's a way that we've tried to link them together to have people understand that that all of these policies work together.
Okay.
Kind of along those lines, I saw somebody mention like access to learning materials and we do have a policy. Um. On that and like, you know, censorship of books, basically, do it and stuff like that. So if we wanted to cross reference that policy, we could do that as well.
Mm hmm. I, I think that that's a great idea, um. Just to mention another possibility, um, you know, I, as Elizabeth pointed out, I think we kind of like. Did a catch all with this language of identity, comma, ability and or background. And, you know, so. Just. Full disclosure reminder that in my professional role, I've been working with the Central Vermont Career Center. They passed an equity policy in August that I helped facilitate a process for last year. We actually had our first meeting of our equity team today, so the.
Oh, wow.
That's weird. Um, and, um, in that one, we used something, I think we just said identity and background, but we def- we also define those. So it it didn't end up being an enormous list, but it did give a little bit more, more meat. Um. You know, kind of gave some examples. Um, so that that's just another possibility, but if the discrim- um, non discrimination policy. Feels like a place to point to, and I'd imagine that that might have some language in there about vulnerable populations or in essence, it's. Defining those, at least the legally protected ones. Um. Is that, is that like handy to to look at, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I can. Let me just. I I was just looking at the top of the policy uh in in the equity policy. Let's see, it would be the second sentence. It says, the district is committed to creating inclusive educational opportunities through universal design for learning and cultural responsive practices. That address the impacts of bias, prejudice and discrimination while building more opportunities for the district to thrive. Maybe putting the reference in there to. See sex, which is the board's commitment to non discrimination, and I'll show you what that one is. See. That's, this is the policy.
Could you make zoom a little bit?
Zoom out or zoom in?
Zoom in, please. Definitely not out with my eyes, Mike.
Let me see.
If it's easy.
It usually is, except when I get into this, there we go. Is that better?
Mm hmm, that's great.
There we go. Yeah, I remember this now, we did list them all.
Yeah. We talked about that at 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 length.
I'm gonna just read this to you. I I like this one comment. It's on line fifty four, at least in my document. Um, this person sits on a multicultural team of coworkers, her new American or immigrants. She goes on to talking about the use of plain language. She ends it by saying, I love that this policy is short and pretty clear in its message. So I guess I just want to make sure we're balancing, you know, if there's people who are like, you know, want us to use certain terms. And I I think we have to be careful about using certain terms because they seem to keep evolving, right? And so I don't want to be so generic that it loses its meaning. But I like what this woman is saying about like using plain language that I think we as a broad community can all wrap our heads around too. So just just a thought in terms of striking that right balance.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I noticed, um. Around terminology, right? Somebody, um, it was the original thirteen. Um, but that person said culturally responsive is an outdated term.
Right.
It implies dominant culture is the norm, culturally sustaining is a better term. And, you know, that person was, you know, strong supporter in general, fours and fours. Um, parent. Um, you know, obviously very knowledgeable. And in fact, that's kind of in the academic literature, culturally sustaining is, you know, slightly newer. But, you know, that's one of those places where I'm like. I've, I've, I think we have a good rationale for using what we're using because, you know, even culturally responsive is. Sort of buzz buzz wordy. Um, but it shows up in the EQS and it shows up in all these other places, right? So it's like, that's a place where we can use, you know, it's not quote unquote plain language, but we have a good rationale to say we're using this. We can learn about it, we can try to, you know. Um, get a shared understanding around this definition and, um. You know, culturally sustaining has these benefits, but we're going with this for this reason. And again, I don't see where we gonna like address that in the policy itself, but. As some sort of side memo or something like somewhere where we have that communication feature, we say, here's some of the themes we heard. Here's the things we like went and changed and here's the things that we just, here's why we didn't, in essence.
Kind of the purpose of having these is open meetings is if somebody. Wants to learn our logic behind it, they can.
I just, I have a one comment. Um, I, in the end. Sort of building on that plain language idea, which I really a- agree with completely. I I like it. I I'm wondering if. I can't find it in there, but maybe it's in there, there's a definition of equity. That is a little like, is there one that's? Obvious, because I don't, I don't know if that, I mean, maybe it's, maybe you, I missed that meeting in June. So I don't know if it was decided that that is not necessary, but. Equity and equality seem to get mixed up by people. So I was curious, what was your, did you guys talk about that?
Yeah, and actually, so you know, that, I mean, it speaks to this. And I think throughout we were kind of talking about like, should this be in definition, should this be implementation? But it's actually the first part right under definitions. So that part that says educational equity occurs. That's kind of, that's the whole definition of equity and it kind of gives like a few different like. Sentences around equity and then it says working towards equity in schools involves, which is, you know, slightly different than equity itself. So it's that whole first chunker there, including those five bullets. And it actually addresses the equality piece too. I think third sentence in equity goes beyond formal equality. So it's in there, Ashley, um.
I see it. I'm sorry, I was.
I think, I think we did discuss, I, because I was looking at that comment and I literally Googled like equity definition. And then I looked at what Web Circuit Dictionary gives us and I remembered why like. Just equity wasn't defined. You know, because it's, it can get.
It's very vague.
It's so big.
Yeah.
And I hate to say like, who are we to determine that? I mean, it goes back to like the Brigham case back in ninety seven too. I mean, I think, I think we're all grappling grappling with this as it relates to, you know, our whole education system, which is why I think we took the approach we did back in June.
Right.
I see it now. I get it. I like it.
I mean, I think. You know. Addressing some of those. Like the the comment about, are we talking about equality of outcomes here, I think is. You know, we could potentially incorporate something there. I mean, our definition is really more about opportunity than outcome, right? Um, so that's, that's a pretty common misconception that might be worth. Addressing.
Mm hmm.
Um. The the other big bucket that I saw, of course, were were people asking for like kind of more specifics, which I think a lot of that, you know, that equity advisory team. Getting their work going and procedures, that'll happen. But I did see a couple that I think are worth kind of looking at together. Um. You know, one person mentioned very, a very specific suggestion and said quarterly reports are unrealistic. And I think.
Somebody said they were realistic.
They were probably both, right?
Probably both are in there.
Let's see. I I see one.
It depends on what the reports are.
Yeah, you're right. No, I don't think quarterly reports are realistic.
No, I I think a yearly report is something that's realistic.
It was the Oxford comma person, actually.
Yeah.
So.
I agree with all you.
So maybe annual, like, because I want that team to, you know, spend their time on the work, not the the report. And of course, you know. The superintendent can report informally to the board anytime they want and anytime the board asks for it, but.
You'd always go halfway and do. Um. Twice a year. And I would say twice a year and not biannual, because biannual is also a very tricky word.
Yeah, I still don't know what that means, um.
It can literally mean either twice a year or every week.
Right.
Gosh, the English language is such a beautiful thing, isn't it? Um. Do you, do you have a sense on that, Elizabeth? Do you feel like once a year or twice a year? Assuming that you also agree quarterly feels too much.
What would you do for twice a year? Would you have like a mid-year report and then an end of the year report?
Yeah, and it gets especially for the, that's why I I, I mean, I would suggest at least using the terms at least annually. And then you could do it more if you wanted.
Yeah.
Like if something big happens that you want to.
Yeah. And sometimes there, I mean, there's been things that we're supposed to report on annually that we report on. You know, multiple times a year. That's, that's, the the policy committee has been doing some work this year. One is we have to make sure we have, um, all of our, um. Procedures updated, but then the other thing that I want to do that we haven't talked about, Tori, is I want to come up with a list of. Things that we're supposed to report on by policy. So that there's an actual calendar. I did that before and it's helpful because you have things all over the place and there really should be a comprehensive list of what those things are for the board.
I like.
At least annual, I'm fine with that. Another like very specific thing that came up that I I think is worth considering is somebody asked for a clear process for. Um. Complaints. And again, this might be referencing something else. Do we already have that?
Well, there there's various complaint procedures. Um, there there's complaint procedures for HHB, there's complaint procedures for Title Nine. There's complaint procedures for general public complaints, so.
Okay.
And I I would say.
Are there gaps there? Like, is that, I mean. Is that something we would want the equity advisory team to, you know? Even like look at?
Or should we at least like pick which procedure or like we want to? Cross reference to. You, because that's a lot of different, I don't know if like they have different time periods or different.
They do, yeah.
Yeah, so I feel like. I feel like it would be useful. For us to just put a cross reference, you know, kind of at the bottom. You know, complaints will follow. This procedure that's already in place, you know, but I don't know which one makes more sense to attach to this.
And how does somebody navigate that, Mike? If they, if they don't know. Are they basically just trusting? Whatever administrator they're in contact with to say, oh, you'd want to go do this, that they're just. You know, not sure how to navigate it.
Yeah, they would reach out and ask. Uh, we've, we've also tried to make our policies very understandable with that, um. I can hear Danielle's voice on that one, Tori. But just wanting to make sure that proceed, if somebody's reading it, they really fully understand. Now, it gets somewhat complex. Because, you know, we we also have kind of our, what we consider like our own personal common sense approach. That's often, um. Overridden by. The legal requirements, so for example, I just pulled up the Title Nine policy. Prevention of sexual harassment is prohibited by Title Nine, uh, and that is a twenty-two page policy. The regulations, the federal regulations were just updated. And because of some cases challenging the Biden administration's interpretation of that. Uh, the School Board Association has put it on hold, but that's that that's an. Example of a policy that we generally don't tinker with because it has been so carefully vetted by. Federal and state sources, so that's where it can get somewhat challenging. But it's still pretty. It's still pretty clear what you have to do to file a complaint, and and principles always help because we are very well. Our staff's very well trained in what to do and how to process it through because there are ramifications if you don't follow those procedures.
Yeah, I mean, I I could see an equity team kind of looking and saying like. You know. Weird stuff is happening, somebody feels like it's not working for them, they've, they're feeling marginalized or don't feel a sense of belonging, they feel like they're being wronged. And just kind of like playing that out, like, does everybody know how to access these these complaint procedures? Do we need to be more proactive to try to understand where people are at? And, you know, so maybe a slight mention in the policy in one of our sections where we already have things about. Checking with stakeholders.
But here's an example of one of them, now this is not the policy, this is the procedure that goes along with the policy for discrimination. And makes it very clear who. Who should be notified, me, with what the process is, uh, what the procedures are. Some, so a lot of it's very clear.
Right, but my question is, you named a, you know, a couple different. Ways to do complaints, is it gonna be clear to somebody that needs to do it, that they need to go through, like the one with discrimination?
Yes, because they'll reach out, and so for complaints, hazing harassment and bullying. There's also kind of a, at the beginning part of that process, there's a dual piece where you're also looking at it through the lens of Title Nine to see if it's also. A Title Nine complaint.
So for the parents, people that don't trust the normal sources of information, like reaching out to principals. Would they be able to figure it out? Cuz those people exist in the world, unfortunately.
We've had cases where, not necessarily here, but cases where they'll reach out to a school board and then they'll send them to me, and then I'll. Share with them the process. Usually people who don't know will either go to the superintendent or the. A board member.
Okay, so maybe we're not feeling that that. Needs a. Policy. Mention, other than what we've already talked about about crosswalking with some of these other.
Yeah, cuz I I think really, the equity policy is meant to be. A policy that that is providing opportunity, not one. If if somebody feels marginalized or feel that there's been some level of discrimination. Their 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 concerns would be met under one of those other policies, not. There's not an equity procedure for. Complaints that really would be either under the general complaint policy. Or one of the other ones we discussed.
Right, and I I mean. You know, another way to think about is that the equity advisory team, right, they're working on implementation, they're working on metrics. Part of that's gonna include, you know. Avenues for to gather perception data. And culture and climate data, so. If something like that is an issue, like hopefully. It'll rise to the top, right, and they'll see, okay, this is, this is a problem, people don't know how to follow that. I mean, the the only other very specific thing I saw was some mentions around staffing. So some people I'd saw coming around. Administrators who have skill in this area, there's a few people who mentioned specifically, you know, DEI coordinators. Um, there's a couple of people that like praise the professional development pieces and talked about trying to hire staff. Um, who are either more with more diverse identities or. Skills. In these areas, so I think that could be something to potentially. Note. Certainly the skill piece, cuz we've kind of addressed it through the professional development, but I wonder if there's also like a hiring and retention. Uh, dimension that. Should be included.
I I I would think that would be a a good addition.
So. If 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 the rest of you all are up for it, I'm happy to try to like take the next crack at this. Try to like weave in a couple of those specifics we just talked about, the cross-referencing. And, you know, maybe add it without. You know. Going too too wild, trying to stick as close to this two pages we can, but you know, add a sentence or or two. To maybe address that broader theme around problem definition or equity and rigor. Being side by side. And just do a do another round. And then we could potentially come back together, look at that. You know, in the meantime, if there was other. People we wanted to weigh in, I guess. Um, with Mike already kind of looking out for some focus group situations and not getting. I don't think things have necessarily slowed down for people at this point. I feel like with the survey, we have a good cross-section of perspectives.
So too, I think. I think, yeah, you wanna take a stab at it. That, that sounds good to me, I would say for cross-referencing, maybe we. Hunt that job to Mike, just cuz he has. Probably take him less time and don't drive yourself crazy, cuz I feel like between Mike and Shannon wisdom, they can probably throw in that cross-reference little chart pretty easily.
You mean for the other policies?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but otherwise, I I totally agree with that.
So apparently I don't have all the board meetings in my calendar. I know we have one on the sixth, do we have one, I'm assuming we do not on the twentieth, or maybe we do. I'm just trying to think of, we do have one on the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, should we try to bring it to the broader board on the twentieth?
Calendar.
Oh, thank you, that's helpful. I wish we had them in our Google account, I don't know why we don't.
Right, that would be, that's a great idea, Elizabeth, that we all got calendar invites to everything for our.
Yeah, and like the links and everything to the meetings were in that, and we seem to have issues.
Yeah.
So remind me, though, we need to warn it one week or two weeks ahead of the meeting?
Uh, we twenty, forty-eight hours, two business days.
For the first read?
Oh, you mean for the first read, it 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 just needs to be put on the board agenda. And warned with the board agenda.
Which is how far in advance of the meeting?
Forty-eight business, uh, two, two business days, forty-eight hours.
Okay, right, that's not as fast as I was thinking.
It it, on- once you. Move a policy for adoption and then has to be warned and advertised. In a newspaper of general circulation for, I believe it's, I think it's ten days or two weeks, I don't have the number, I don't have it right in front of me, but Shannon always keeps track of that. Because it's always dependent upon when we get it to the newspaper and when they can publish it. Prior to the meeting, so.
Like, as the person doing the bulk of the editing before we nitpick it. Do you feel confident that you could get it revised by? Maybe like the week of November eleventh, and then we look at having a meeting on that week?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good shout, so we can meet again on, say, November thirteenth. And then if all goes well, potentially have something for the board on the twentieth. Is that what we were just laying out? And then that would be first reading. And then. I think. Mike, you were kind of thinking that it might be worth it for us to have a. Tentative meeting. Between first and second reading, if there's stuff to incorporate back from the board, right?
And and you could, if we just kind of block that out on our calendars, and then you can decide. The three of you can get decide on the night of the board meeting, whether based on the feedback from the board, whether you want to have another meeting.
I agree, it's always easier to cancel than add a meeting.
So that means we can meet.
Not the twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit of a, we don't really have another good time in between, I mean, I guess we could possibly meet on that. Monday or Tuesday, I don't know, how are, how are other people doing that? That week of of Thanksgiving, are people available on the twenty-sixth?
Look.
I won't be.
Yeah, that's gonna be tough for me as well.
Okay.
What day is the twenty-sixth?
Tuesday.
I can do whatever the group wants.
Yeah, I mean. You know, we could.
Yeah, I mean, put it on, I'll see if I can pull it off.
What about, what about Friday, the twenty-second?
No, evening meetings on Fridays are never good for me.
I don't think you should make choices based on my schedule.
Thursday, the twenty-first?
Fresh in our minds after the board meeting. Which is necessarily the worst thing.
My first is great with me.
Should we pencil that in?
What what time do you all prefer, I'll I'll make sure it's penciled in the right time on my calendar, so it gets. Loaded up right.
I will be away.
What date is this?
Twenty-first.
Thursday, the twenty-first? I have a. And like you might as well, there's a. Cross at Brook Chorus is six to eight PM on that night.
Oh, geez, thank you for saving me on that one.
Yeah, definitely do that then.
Problem of looking at multiple calendars, right? That would have been bad, Elizabeth. So we, so the first reading at the board on the twentieth. And twenty-first won't work, twenty-second won't work, the following week. Twenty, do people have Monday, the twenty-fifth?
Why don't we schedule that?
Yeah, it works.
Okay, great.
Six or seven PM.
You know, I. I said seven last time, but if we can do a six o'clock, it kind of actually works better for me for dinner, if other people are good with it.
It works for me.
Um, and then potential, sorry.
Ashley, you walked away, but we're doing the twenty-fifth at six.
I'm gonna be in Ireland. Refer back, I know. Very.
Yeah, you can zoom in, it's cool.
One for the week of the eleventh as well?
The ele- uh, the thirteenth.
The thir- thirteenth at six o'clock?
Yeah. And then potentially, we could do a second reading on December fourth, right?
And warn it that night then.
Which means we could potentially vote on it on the eighteenth?
Yes, we're gonna get it done before the end of the year.
A thing.
As long as the the timing works out for when they'll publish versus the the meeting.
We're gonna make it happen.
Sounds great, that was the original goal.
It was ago.
All right, that could be quite amazing, assuming. You know, assuming the board likes what we're working with, I think we have a.
It's awesome.
We're in the ballpark.
Great.
When do you, you want the first draft on for next week?
I'm sorry?
When do you want the first draft on?
The first reading, you mean?
Yes.
Uh, November twentieth, I think.
Okay, perfect, okay.
We'll get together on the thirteenth, and Mike and I will have some track changes for the group. And then put in front of the board the next week.
Sounds awesome.
All right, so just to recap that, we're gonna um, meet again November thirteenth to look at our next draft. Bring first reading to the board on November twentieth. Um, we'll connect again on November twenty-fifth, our meetings are all at six. And then, uh, second reading December fourth and potential adoption on December eighteenth.
Yeah.
All right, let's see what we can do.
Thanks, Alan, thanks, life, for making those edits as well.
Thank you, yes, I look forward to. To putting something together and getting back together with y'all. Y'all rock.
My second, Tori, Tori's already motioning.
I'm I'm working on the minute, so November thirteenth, Policy Committee, November for twenty-fifth, first reading to board, what's the next date?
Uh, first reading to board is November twentieth.
Then twelve-four for second reading.
December four for second reading.
Twelve eighteen for adoption.
Wasn't there a possible date in between the twentieth and the fourth?
Yep, it's twenty-fifth.
That's the meeting you're gonna have.
Another committee meeting. So possibly just two more meetings of this esteemed crew.
Thanks for all your work, you guys, it's great.
Thank you, and thanks for joining, Ashley, appreciate it. Uh, did I hear emotion, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite.
I heard a first and a second.
That's incredible, all right, does anybody object to adjourning?
Not a bit.
Thanks.
Have a great night, guys.
Buddy, take care.
Thanks, everyone.